The Facebook ones, so I'll just make sure.
Hold on, you two.
Yeah.
Alright, good evening, everyone. And we will be doing the Community Development Agency meeting first. We'll call that meeting to order. Chrissy, can you do roll call, please?
John?
Here.
Melanie?
Here.
Jake?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, a proof of publication in front of me. Uh, next is visitors' correspondence. Anyone desiring to speak on any item or issue not on the agenda or on any item on the agenda that does not include a public hearing may do so. This shall be limited to three minutes. Persons should identify themselves by name and address. Persons speaking should not expect the council to engage in back-and-forth dialogue regarding their comments. Unless an agenda item includes a public hearing, no person may speak during the business portion of the meeting. Provided, however, persons speaking during a public hearing are limited to between five and twenty minutes. The public is advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the council chamber and one copy of all reproducible written material to be discussed at this meeting is available for examination or copying. Need a motion to approv-- oh, sorry, is there anyone that wants to speak?
Yes, I do.
Okay, come on up.
My name is Bonnie Bevinton. I live at 304 Northwest Street, number fifteen. I have laryngitis, so you'll have to forgive me. I have an open letter to the mayor and city council of the city of Valley, Nebraska, dated February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Our observation of our city government has led us to the following. One, the mayor and her staff have ample time to meet and prepare programs and projects for the city. Two, the city council has limited time to review these items and no time to discuss with their constituents. Three, the council is then asked to approve these items or disapprove with little or no input. Four, we have a diverse group of council members who are apparently independent thinkers and want to do the right thing when they vote. Five, more communication from the mayor to the council with ample time for background information and thought is required. The mayor and council being elected by the citizens should welcome their input. Seven, the council does not agree with the items put forward by the mayor and her staff. They should vote no without the threat of retaliation from the mayor or staff. We have heard this kind of thing from other elected officials in the past. You must pass this bill to know what it is. We suggest that the council vote no on all items that are presented with limited background information. When you vote on an item, you own it. Think before you vote. Thank you. I have copies for, um, the council members and the mayor. So do you want those handed out?
Two guys, do you want copies?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Please make sure the city clerk gets one as well.
I'm sorry?
The city clerk needs to get one for the record as well.
I don't know if I have enough for tonight.
You can give her mine and she'll make me a copy.
Okay.
Alright, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, um, we need a motion to--
No, I'm just giving this to one of the--
Yes.
Sure. Um, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Vote, please.
The mayor has this.
All in favor? Alright, number six, resolution number CDA twenty-five, twenty-two-five dash zero-one. Authority consideration in action to approve amendment number ten to the redevelopment contract between the Community Development Agency of the city of Valley, Nebraska and Blue Water Development Corporation. Uh, as we learned, this is the annual item that we have to do to add the lots that we certified with building permits onto the redevelopment agreement. Is there any questions?
Andrea, for the benefit of everybody else, so there's not any questions, would you give a one-minute recap of the discussion we had? Thank you.
Uh, Andrea, referencing the attorney's office. So the item in front of you today is, um, an amendment to the Blue Water Redevelopment Contract, which controls their TIP. Their TIP is a rolling TIP, which means annually we amend that contract to add on the lots for which building permits were pulled in the last year. Um, so this amendment does just that. Um, and what that does then is it also authorizes the city to file the notice to divide with Douglas County, which is what then triggers the fifteen-year TIP period on those particular lots. So that's what this resolution and amendment do, and that's what we're asking you to approve here tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Andrea? Okay, I need a motion to approve resolution number CDA twenty-two-five dash zero-one.
So moved.
Second.
Vote, please. All in favor? Need a motion to adjourn the Community Development Agency meeting.
So moved.
Vote, please. All in favor? Alright, we will move over to the regular council meeting. Chrissy, let me know when you're ready.
I am ready, thank you.
Alright, we will call this meeting to order. Chrissy, we do roll call, please.
John?
Here.
Melanie?
Here.
Jake?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Melanie, would you be--
(Inaudible) United States of America. We are the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have proof of publication in front of me. Visitors' correspondence. Anyone desiring to speak on any item or issue not on the agenda or on any item on the agenda that does not include a public hearing may do so. This shall be limited to three minutes. Persons should identify themselves by name and address. Persons speaking should not expect the council to engage in back-and-forth dialogue regarding their comments unless an agenda item includes a public hearing. No person may speak during the business portion of the meeting. Provided, however, persons speaking during a public hearing are limited to between five and twenty minutes. Public advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the council chamber and one copy of all reproducible written material to be discussed at this meeting is available for examination or copying. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this meeting? Alright, need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Vote, please. All in favor?
I'm just a second.
Oh, sorry.
I'm moving a little slow tonight, I don't know why, but it is. It's nine. Okay, who approved the agenda?
We haven't gotten there yet. I need a motion to approve the agenda. Or the consent agenda, sorry, we approved the agenda.
Yeah, that's what I need to know.
John? John.
Okay, now maybe a second bit. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, now we're on the consent agenda.
Okay, do you need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Vote, please. All in favor? Alright, number eight is a pool update. Cameron?
Good evening, mayor, council, and guests. A brief update on the current state of our pool.
Cameron, can you move the microphone?
We received two estimates to repair it, to get it up in time for the summer. First quote was eighty-six thousand, and the second quote was a hundred and sixteen thousand. And this was for plumbing, concrete removal, and getting it, you know, ready for the, ready for the summer. Um, one thing about the pool is over the last three years, it's increased in price based on maintenance and just, you know, just upkeep has been one of the major expenses going forward. The average cost for opening this year would be at a minimum eighty-six thousand. That's if nothing else is found wrong, that's if, that's just for plumbing, and that's not for any mechanical. And the average management cost for the pool per month is about twenty-seven thousand. And last year, we had one thousand two hundred and eight swimmers at the pool. And if, you know, simple math, if we took the eighty-six thousand and the twenty-seven thousand, each kid would be paying about ninety-four bucks to swim over the summer. Um, and that's just to, you know, break even on costs. Some statistics about participation at the pool. Valley in-town participants are about seventy-nine percent. That's nine hundred and forty-nine. Out-of-town visitors was at about twenty-one percent. Kids that walked, that twenty-six percent. Those who rode bikes were about fourteen percent. And those who were dropped off via car was at fifty-two percent, the majority. The information that I'm providing is based on moving forward with an RFP process where we would award, schedule, and have the work completed with an anticipated timeframe between now and mid-June if there's action on it in the near future. Both estimates detail the scope of work for about four to six weeks at a minimum, and that's weather contingent. Other options are floating around different locations potentially for the pool tied to some other economic development. The option of leaving the pool where it's currently at is also an option. Also rebuilding the pool at the current location is an option. Looking at cost for rebuilding and relocating will have to be a process that will be brought to council at our next meeting. But as of now, this is the update of the current state of the pool. Any questions?
When did, uh, I'm just, when did the pool open last year to roughly? Was it, was it later than that question?
It was June first. It was early June.
What do you have on that, your dates?
The dates, no, it's not on the date.
No.
It opened mid-June, but that was after--
June first. It opened early June last year.
That was after the filter was--
Any other questions?
Do you have questions?
What has been the annual fee, um, for the pool pass in the last five years?
Same.
Yeah, it said it'd be like ninety-four dollars per kid.
That was if you divided the number of people that participated with the cost of opening and the average management cost. It would be ninety-four bucks. It's--
And if you don't have a YMCA membership, you can buy a pass for your family or per person, right?
Just one at the YMCA?
No, just one at the public pool.
Yeah, you've been able to in the past years.
And then how much is the summer pool pass, do you know?
That, we don't determine the price until we do the management agreement, and that wouldn't come until, normally we do that in April, but we wouldn't have it if, we won't have the pool open.
Do we know what that price was in the last five years?
We can look back and see what it was last year. It's not gonna, it wouldn't have been the same in all the years. Chrissy, can you take that as an action? Thank you.
I don't think it's too much different than twenty-fifteen, twenty-six, basically twenty-fifteen to twenty-nineteen, I myself have paid anywhere from eighty to ninety dollars each year.
Well, I gave that quote, that is--
No, it was just like a good comparison, just to know where I'm at. No, this is good stuff.
You're definitely not looking to pass that off to this one person.
No, no, I know, but yeah, it's just a good comparison. Yeah, it seems in the same area.
Any other questions on that?
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Um, number nine, then, Cameron, City Administrator update.
Well, are we gonna do an action or a hack-in? Because, John, earlier you had mentioned that on these estimates to hit the repairs, you wanted to know like what type, type of guarantee there could be or, or warranty say?
No, I was looking for basically saying if we do a portion of that, uh, repair and basically bring it up to new and standard, what is the downstream effect? There's unintended consequences to those repairs and, you know, what else are we going to find is deficient in that system? Because, you know, I don't think we can spend, spend dollars ultimately. And again, this will be borne out in the costs that we get from bids and everything else, but I don't think we can spend that kind of money to say, hey, we're gonna open this for thirty or forty-five days and next year abandon it. I mean, that's a tough spend for me, so.
So next month, you'll have all three bids--
I'll have all three bids.
--for us to look at.
And I'll also look into having a more in-depth assessment of the pool, mechanical and electrical.
And you said the rough price for a new pool, that was eighty-eight, was roughly four to six million?
Four to six million, okay.
And then same location or different location?
It's a ballpark for either location. Just pool by itself would be four to six million.
Alright, and then what bucket does that come out of?
We'd have to decide that. If we wanna build a new pool, we'd have to get the money. We don't have, we don't currently have that money sitting around.
I can say, no, that would be like a wastewater fund, cap of facilities, truck?
Oh, definitely not wastewater, nothing. I mean, it would be the general fund. Everything, everything comes out of general fund except for water and wastewater.
Alright. Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Alright, Cameron, City Administrator update?
Other updates, um, staff and legal participated in the twenty-twenty-five Midwinter Conference that was hosted by the National League of Municipalities, February twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. We participated in sessions for newly-elected officials. They had sessions for affordable housing, legislative updates, public records, law and transparency in government sessions. And overall, it was an opportunity to meet with other city administrators, council members, legislators from across the state. Definitely network and share resources, and it was overall a, a great training. The last update I have is an update on the city park. Today, completed work, all concrete parking lots are at eighty-five percent. Pickleball and basketball courts have been poured and cured out. All three picnic shelter structures have been completed. Fencing is substantially completed. Volleyball court is substantially completed. Site is approximately fifty percent graded. Upcoming work will be electrical for the picnic shelters, site finish grading, sprinkler irrigation, landscaping, and court striping for the pickleball courts, the new courts. Uh, substantial completion for the project is May ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Any questions on the party?
And that's the completion of phase one, right?
Yes.
Okay. What, um, bucket does that come out of? Everything but water, wastewater is the general fund. Oh, okay, that's general fund. And then how much did, uh, phase one cost us?
I think it was one point seven-ish.
Okay.
One point seven million.
One point seven.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, and that's already been budgeted for, obviously, since we did it, it was over a year ago.
Perfect.
Okay, anything else, Cameron?
That's it.
Alright, number ten. Oh, really? Sorry?
Under City Administrator.
Okay, sorry.
Just quick, um, you guys got a handout for me, the work session, just going over. You guys aren't voting on anything, this is just to fill you guys in on our nuisance property letters that are going out and the responsibility that the council holds. Um, I've got the boilerplate letter printed out for you guys. That'll go to every person that has an unsafe structure. What follows in that letter is all of the, um, ordinance that we passed and the abatement and the powers that the city has. And hopefully, we don't get to that point, but we might. Uh, if the city abates it, we do a bid process. Um, and then if the homeowner or the property owner doesn't pay for the fixes or can't pay or won't pay, um, then it would come to you guys as a vote to put a lien on the property to, for the city to recoup those costs. So just letting you guys know where your responsibility is with these letters. And they're actually going out here pretty soon for, um, four to six homes, structures we've got in Valley that are unsafe, so that's what this letter is. So, any questions?
Would, um, when we go out for these structures, is that like a demolition time situation? And then how much is the average cost for that?
Oh, I, I probably varies by site. I wouldn't know until I start pulling bids.
Okay.
Um, I would probably go through, I mean, Pikes Myers one, um, but there's a lot of construction companies, not a lot, there's a few that specialize in demo. Uh, so the other option, if possible, which in red, inside the town and city, I'm not sure enough to talk to Terry Luthy, the police chief, they could also do a controlled burn. If we get to that point, o- obviously, we're gonna be choosing the best bid. Might be the cheapest as well, because at the end of the day, we put a lien on their property or something like that, but, um, we have to go through the bidding process in order to each individual house, so, or structure.
Would the city maintain and clean that lot and stuff, or?
No, so if we demoed it and then there's weeds in it, this letter goes out again, and then, okay, yes, theoretically, we would. After a second letter for weeds goes out, then five days, we get nothing, we send certified mail, all this stuff gets scanned in, and then our public works would go out. We've got a price, I wanna say it's two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, minimum two hours. They go out, same thing. We then go back to you guys for, hey, we've got another lien on this property for, um, weed whacking and mowing or whatever it happens to be. So, yes, down the road. Ideally, we never get to that and the letters and are enough, but yes, theoretically.
You're-- No, sorry.
You, you can just do like one of the structure and the weeds, or if there's two--
I can.
Or is it just one at a time?
So I, I can, I can, I can wrap them together. What I would like to do is keep them separate. Now, does that mean that there are certain lots that I would be sending two of these out in the next week? One for the structure, one for junk, one for grass, absolutely. The only reason I'm doing that is if we end up in court, which there's a good chance that on one of these we will, or maybe a couple, that it's not confusing in the letter. This one was for your unsafe structure, this one was for your junk, this one was for your weeds, for example. That's, that's how I plan on tackling it unless our attorneys have a, another thought. Um, it's all housed in one letter, the boilerplate is, but it depends on what you highlight that highlight different things. I thought about doing it all at once, but again, don't wanna muddy that water. Three separate letters, three separate signatures for three separate items on property. If in that case, we, we go that far, right now with winter, grass is tough, it's all dead anyways, but, or dormant, but yeah, springtime comes, grass, grass orders will go out again, so.
And then, sorry, one more silly question, just thinking out loud. Um, if any of these homes have like somewhat of like a crawl space or a basement, someone's actually surprising when they have a basement?
Mm-hmm.
Do we fill that? Wouldn't actually leave it the way that it is, would it?
So what we would do on a handful or slab, there's probably one or two that have small, I would bid that in there because we need to return the lot to, but not a nuisance, not a safety hazard. So yeah, absolutely, if, if there's a, uh, hole, a basement, whatever, it'll be filled in. And again, all of that would go to the same contractor, it would be part of the bid.
Okay.
And then the lien would be put on the home, so, yeah. Yep.
Any other questions for you? Thank you. Alright, People's Service update, Jeremy?
Jeremy, being with People's Service, um, really, we're working hard on the meters, what our main focus is. Um, we definitely have a guy on that all the time and also other, the other guys help too, me and Bob help too to get these done. He's finding, he's finding a lot of issues, but it's mostly batteries are dead and stuff because they're only ten-year battery life on them. And so he's just replacing that IQ and done, he's gone and it's back to working. He's, he has put up a lot of fires out and not get the best response, but it's coming in slowly. The other thing was the, the two lovely water main breaks we had this month, this last month, which they're fun, but they got fixed. And then, uh, yeah, so that we had a few people, their curbs, their pipes froze. We had to dig up their curb stops because they were broke. We got them fixed and backed up, shut the water off, and they got it fixed and back on. So that was our main problem, is water this month was our biggest problem. But, um, do you guys have any questions about anything going on? Alright, thank you.
Alright, City Engineer.
Good evening, Greg Berry, City Engineer. Uh, the first item that we have on the agenda is water treatment plant expansion for excellent construction. Um, just to kind of a brief report is, the last month has been extremely difficult with the weather up and down for them to be, starting on constructions, they really haven't gotten a whole lot done, but they have gotten a lot of the prep work done on the de-watering, um, system for the building expansion. Also, they've received a bunch of materials for the project itself, so, uh, come by the end of this week, they should, you should see water being pumped out for the de-watering and hopefully even some excavation starting to occur next week, so. They will, um, we have progress being with them last Thursday, or a week ago Thursday, and, uh, they will be, uh, they're overall saying they're about a month behind schedule, which is, we're up with the cold weather of February, so. They will be, uh, getting high gear now because we're wanting this online by the next to spring. Overall schedule is for a year from now, so. Uh, with that, then we use have progress payment number two, which takes them to about three percent of their overall contract price in about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, twenty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. So having reviewed that, we recommend approval to Erickson Construction in their here post amount.
I would entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash zero-nine, consideration in action to approve contractor's application for payment number two in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, twenty-five dollars and seventy-five cents to Erickson Construction.
So moved.
Second, vote, please. All in favor?
Uh, Jim, then just really some overall miscellaneous updates for, uh, council is Val Haven Lookstation number two and Woodson two, these lookstations have been tracking for quite a while. The contractor has, um, mobilized and then left, and actually that contractor was the one that did the water main break, breaks in town over the last couple of weeks that Jeremy alluded to. Um, so they are going to be back on site here by the end of next, this week or the first of next week, he's actually on vacation this week. Uh, so that will be occurring for those, both of those two projects with Val Haven being the first lookstation that they will work on. And then the next couple are Valley Likes Business Park, that is program, yeah, passed and funded, so the contractor on that's looking to start right around April first. So we will be having a pre-construction on that, that's two hundred and sixty-fourth and Mixon Street. FY twenty-five street projects that, uh, the former public works director and that had budgeted for us, uh, that's Platte and Park Street, we're working on those. Um, we hope to have those bid by the April meeting, we'll have to check the calendar on if we'll meet that with the meeting requirements, everything else, but go ahead, Linda.
I have a question, since you're talking about street projects.
Sure.
I, I, this falls where the water mains break.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the street repairs are, seem to be taking forever in, on West Street and Winningham. That water main break was quite some time ago, and the street still is not repaired.
Those are all done by, Jeremy left. I'm not looking to the former public works directors, but I was gonna ask Jeremy, I'm almost positive those are done by the city crews, and those are probably not being replaced until the spring with the frost being out of the ground. So the, those should be scheduled now, I mean, you know, I wouldn't say immediately, but now the frost is basically out of the ground as of last week, so.
Yeah, the other thing they typically try and do is wait until there's more because it doesn't, it's not very cost-effective to bring in just one, light for one panel. So they typically wait until the spring when the frost is out and do all of them from the winter at once, so. They was, I think there's five, right? Did we talk about?
We talked about the frost.
I'm not looking at you, Doug.
Any other questions with that?
No.
Uh, Ginger Cove Bridge Repairing, then, that one will have a, a pre-construction meeting as well. That's the steel bridge underneath, that was a budgeted project that's scheduled for basically attended at April fourteenth, that's been passed along to the, uh, Ginger Cove HOA. I had talked to them, even as of this morning, they're having a meeting tonight to start conveying that information because that will close the portion of the lake underneath the bridge, or just directly underneath the bridge there in the Coe area from what's called Skinny River and stuff. Uh, so that will impact them for about four to six weeks. Uh, but we have been working on that, and then again, a lot of pre-construction on that as well. So we have a lot of things, uh, gonna be starting up. Valley Landing, then, the third one, I'll keep, continue saying pre-construction meetings, another one's targeting about an April first start. Um, that's for the utility work on that project there south of three, um, between two hundred and sixty-fourth and two hundred and seventieth for-- for sanitary sewer, storm sewer and water main construction. So that'll be probably a three-month duration of project, so. A lot of things starting up now that the spring is here. I'll just declare it now for everybody. Any questions?
Any questions for Greg?
Thank you.
Okay, City Attorney?
Most of the work in the last month has been in connection with developments that are beginning to onboard and pop up that will be before the council, uh, probably in the next ninety days and beyond. We've been talking to the Glass Lake people quite a bit. As most of you know, Glass Lake was, uh, a plat was approved a number of years ago and a portion of the plat, a very small portion of the plat at the western end was in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the county. And so when we thought that was going forward, we agreed with the county and that jurisdiction was ceded to the city of Valley. So only one authority would have authority over the jurisdiction. So, uh, they're coming, uh, with the plat again and, uh, same situation. They're asking that the county cede jurisdiction. I've got a meeting, uh, with the county zoning administrator and a deputy county attorney about that, actually tomorrow afternoon. Sort of leads into some other things, uh, that are longer range. I'm sure they're gonna make an ask for an SID. And, uh, our comp plan, uh, although it doesn't prohibit SIDs, it, it, as it's written down discourages them. And I think we need to consider, the council, planning and council, uh, need to consider, uh, an amendment that would set forth some factors to be considered, um, when making a decision about whether or not an SID would be allowed. And I've talked to Larry Botker, I've been at GoToPlanning and, and we're gonna visit about that. I've, I've got some notes on it, been thinking about it. So that'll be coming, uh, to you at some point in the future too. Alcorn Athletic, the, as most of you probably know, their application for the OB eleven ninety-seven funds has been completed and filed. It's down in Lincoln. I think everybody's waiting to see what happens during this legislative session because there's a number of bills that, uh, that could affect that. So, um, we also had a very preliminary pre-app meeting on a development, uh, east of, of Lowe's, kind of across from Catalina. And, uh, just telling you had it, it's gonna take a while to develop if in fact they decide to proceed with it. I'll agree with Cameron and Greg on the Midwinter Conference, it was excellent, uh, enjoyed it, uh, learned some things and, uh, we'll go again. Uh, we had some other personnel matters we were working on and the normal, you know, sort of everyday questions. But, uh, mostly it's been, uh, things related to future development. Okay, any questions?
Thanks, Jeff. All right, Mayor's Report. Doug, you know I'm gonna do it because you're here, I'm sorry. So Doug wasn't here at the last meeting and he decided to come this one. So I am going to reread his recognition because he deserves it. We would like to recognize Doug Egan for nearly sixteen years of dedicated service to the city of Valley. Doug did retire at the end of February. Doug started in Public Works in two thousand and nine and while his title and department have always been Public Works, he had many other duties as assigned, to name a few, website designer, IT director, social media manager, barbecue competition organizer and in-house insurance expert. Even with all of those tasks, I think he still just wanted to be mowing. So that was his favorite. So Doug, thank you for coming tonight and thank you for your dedication and loyalty to the residents of Valley. Please come back every week and I won't do that again, I promise. Okay, and then other things that I have today, um, you might notice from our live feed, we are going to be switching to streaming on a YouTube channel instead of Facebook. One of the things we talked about with other officials at the lead conference is that's something people are going to. And then very shortly after, we had those discussions, Facebook announced that they would only be retaining live videos for thirty days. So once we have made the, um, video recording of it, we do need to retain it for at least a year. So with Facebook not doing that anymore, we need to make a switch. So tonight we are streaming both on Facebook and YouTube, or at least I hope we are, it seems like we are. But we will be putting notifications out to point everybody over to the YouTube channel and we, the city has their own channel and that's where we will stream, so. Jeremy touched on meter readings, um, Kindra has really, the utility clerk has been spearheading that and doing a lot of work to get all of that done. That has obviously created some higher bills to go out. If meters hadn't read for a long period of time and Kindra is working with those people and reviewing those to make sure that we have everything right, they're all kind of a case-by-case basis. We also, I shouldn't say we, Kindra sends out postcards that are going out regarding the rate changes and then email notifications have already gone out. So we're sending postcards to a hundred percent of our utility customers and then emails to everybody who has signed up for our electronic billing. So, um, it's also out on the website as well. Um, and then lastly, we will be having our cleanup day on May thirty-first this year. Any questions? Okay, upcoming items, um, next Tuesday, March eighteenth, we have planning commission at four-thirty. And then we have Valley Lakes Planning Meeting at six o'clock, not six-thirty, I said on the agenda. Sorry. That's okay. All right, and then number fifteen, consideration of proceeding in closed session. Uh, closed session might be necessary for the protection of the public interest and pertains to threatened litigation. I believe if someone wants to entertain that, Jeff had given us a motion.
I move that the Valley City Council go into closed session. Closed session is necessary to protect, for the protection of the public interest and pertains to threaten, threatened litigation. The closed session shall be limited to the purposes set forth in the motion and no formal action or consensus of formal action shall be taken or arrived at in the closed session. The reasons necessitating the closed session are the protect, number one, the protection of public interest. Number two, strategy with respect to threatened litigation. I move that we go into closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vote please. All in favor?
Do these push up?
Yes, yes, thank you.